Every time. Alright, good evening everyone. Thank you for coming to Rapid City area. Testing. Alright, take three. Welcome everyone to the Rapid City Area Schools Board of Education regular meeting. I like to call this meeting to order with a roll call. Sheila?
Troy Carr.
Here.
Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Katie Urban.
Here.
Donna Moore.
Here.
Walt Swan is absent with notice. Angela Rafferty.
Here.
Christine Stephenson.
Here.
This time I'd like to call Elder Gordon Howie for our invocation. And you'll have to see if that mic is on or not. There should be a switch, a switch on the side somewhere. Alright, that might be better. Your board president has given me three instructions. One, not to sermonize. Two, not to turn it into a political rally. And three, that there is a time limit, so you're safe. Lord willing, I'll get through that. Let's pray. God, we just thank you for this day, for the beautiful area that we live in. And God, I specifically thank you tonight for calling men and women to serve. And I ask your blessing on every member of this board, on every teacher, every administrator. God, we need your help. And I'm asking you, Lord, tonight, just continue to move among them. Cause them to think right, to do right, what's true and what's right. And bless their efforts. We pray for the students tonight, God. In this turbulent time, they are challenged and you see those challenges. We lift them to you tonight and ask you, God, to move in our schools. Protect them, shield them from the attacks of the enemy. Bless them, keep them safe, and cause them to learn. God, not just reading, writing, and arithmetic, but learn what's right and pure. And give them a good launching pad for their lives. We thank you for all these things and all these people in the name of Christ. Amen. I'd invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda.
Uh, prior to that Bishop Carr, um, I would propose that we remove item fifteen executive session because it's not necessary.
Sure. Hey, I entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda except for item fifteen.
I'll motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Alright, sharing that success. Dr. Thompson.
Good evening. I am excited to be here tonight to share some exciting news that we have participated in over the last few weeks. Um, Rapid City Area Schools held a district-wide food drive from November fifth through November twelfth, and then followed that with a special expanded uh food pantry giveaway or distribution for RCAS families at Rapid City Alternative Academy on Thursday, November twentieth. A drive-through model was utilized due to the high number of families that we anticipated, and that proved to be incredibly successful. In just an hour and a half, the district served over one hundred and thirty families, uh more than five hundred individuals. And I'm told that was a forty-four percent increase over a typical pantry night. Uh, I want to extend a sincere thank you to Dr. Justin Conroy, our Title I D principal, um Anita Dorano, uh McKinney Vento Coordinator, and Kit White, our student success coordinator, because it took an extraordinary effort to make this happen. Um, there was a lot of organization um and then oversight to the event. I was very impressed by their hard work, compassion, and unwavering commitment to meeting the needs of our students and our families. So although Anita and Kit were not able to join us tonight, I am pleased that Dr. Justin Conroy is here as he played a significant role in making this happen. Would you like to say anything else?
Thank you very much. This was definitely a team effort. Uh, you know, the Rapid City, uh City of Rapid City Code Enforcement Team, they also assisted us with a lot of our uh traffic direction and so on, plus Rapid City PD also assisted us. We had several students represented from all of our high schools, Rapid City Alternative Academy, Central, and Stevens High School. They were providing assistance along with several of you within this room, other school administrators and so on. So it was definitely a team effort. Our McKinney Vento team, they do this monthly, so this is a, this is a great program that we have and it's, it's a great benefit for our community and our families. So definitely appreciate, appreciate everyone's assistance and support and help along with that. And uh, thank you.
Alright, Dr. Conroy, I'm sure we have some comments for you, so if you can.
Oh, sorry.
Just hold on a second. Um, uh, yeah, uh, Mrs. Clapham.
Um, one, thank you. Thank you so much for going above and beyond. Um, people all of a sudden say, you know, teachers and people in schools only work between seven and three and to end, we all know that that is not the case that, um, and I appreciate that. And I also just wanna say, just showing our students how to serve, showing our students how to be servant leaders, as well as recognizing that our priority is to educate students, but students don't learn if they're hungry. Parents can't worry about helping with homework when they're working a third job to put food on the table. And so this is just such a holistic project and effort, and I'm super appreciative of it. And thank you for going out of your way to make it such a big success.
You're welcome.
Well, I, I don't wanna say the same thing Jamie said, cuz she's much more eloquent than me. So, um, thank you. The question I had, there was some people who asked me this and I didn't know the answer. On that day, did we give away the food that was raised at the food drive at all the schools?
The, from my understanding, uh, from the, from the donation that was provided to the district, uh, that's where the food that was, um, that's where the majority of the food came from. So the food drive is actually going to be distributed from, from what I understand this month as well.
As part of this or as part of like in different schools, will it be available to students or it's just gonna be a, what, what our community handed into the, or brought into the schools last month will just be given away?
From that, yes. From the food that was, uh, just, that was, uh, during the food drive to all the different buildings, that food is then going to be distributed to South Dakota Feeding in America, which will then be distributed back to the.
Okay, so they're gonna, they are gonna arrange it and sort it and put it in.
It's gonna go to the backpacks, right?
Yeah, there'll be a backpack portion of that too.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for.
Yeah, I mean, I ought to clarify a few of that, but there's several different food drives, like the City of Rapid City, they also had a food drive and they're donating a lot of that back to the district too. So, but before we have to, we work with Feeding South Dakota, and any food that's donated has to go through their process first and kind of vet it and make sure, and then it's distributed back to the district here.
Got it. Thank you.
That's where I say a big thank you to our McKinney Vento. Mr. Binder, I didn't say his name earlier, but uh Anita and Mr. Binder, they do an awesome job working uh with that, with Feeding South Dakota on a monthly basis.
Alright, thanks.
Mrs. Rafferty.
It definitely was a team effort and everything was so seamless. Everything was set up and people were in their cars ready to collect their food. I just want to applaud the, the team that put all this together and also the donor. Um, it was s- something really good that the community could really benefit from and it was just a wonderful experience to see. And the people, all the people that were there to help and then the people that were there to receive the needed food. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. We had a lot of positive feedback from the families. Uh, this was brand new, uh, the drive-through process that we implemented. So uh, we had a lot of good feedback. They really appreciated that, this drive-through, and it was very seamless too. And thank you to Dr. Rafferty for assisting us too. I really enjoyed visiting with them.
What was the size of the donation? Was it one monetary donation to do this? And the person won, and the person wanted to stay anonymous?
Yes, we received a one ten thousand dollar donation um through an anonymous source.
And Dr. Conroy, I was there that night and appreciated being there and for it being the first time that that system was used. I thought it went off um without a hitch. I had never been to that part of the building, so it kind of took me a while to know where I was going. But it was good to, to again a- add to my education of, of the scope of the school. And I found out where the metal detectors were. So I was, I've al- always heard about them, but never seen them. And so they're stored in that part of the, that part of the building. So thank you for your team and for your specific efforts.
Oh, you're welcome. And thank you to everybody here. Appreciate it.
Alright, let's give them another hand. I think it's. Oh, that's right, kitchen seats.
Okay. Hi, this call outside. Perfect, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. Alright, thank you. At this time, we have open forum. We have one tonight from Mrs. Thompson Fuller. And you have five minutes.
Okay, I don't get thirty minutes? Oh, shucks. Yes, my name is Florence Thompson Fuller, and I'm President of South Dakota Parents Involved in Education. I'm also a retired school psychologist with over forty years' experience in the schools. I wanted to tell the board about uh some resources that are available for school boards. And this is through the um National School Boards Leadership Council. And this is a, uh, an organization that gives perhaps a different perspective on school problems. I know that uh, the, the standard um procedure is that every, we go with everything the Associated School Boards of South Dakota says and their national group. But there, there are other views. And this is one way to find out what is happening um from a different perspective. And I think that uh, it will help to give you um more to work with. I looked at their website and they have one section that is called litigation news with a, which I think you'll find quite interesting. And there's just a few things that are in it. Uh, he was fired for protecting his children. Group sues Oklahoma over social studies standards promoting Christianity. Appeals court rules Florida teachers' personal pronouns are not free speech. Appeals court backs Florida law barring transgender teachers' use of her pronouns. Virginia school expelled Jewish siblings after parents blew the whistle on classroom antisemitism lawsuit alleges. School district sued for socially transitioning a girl to a boy against parents' wishes. Supreme Court sides with parents in Maryland dispute over LGBT pride storybooks in school. Native American group pleased with New York mascot case being referred to DOJ. SCOTUS upholds Tennessee Safe Act protecting children. Valedictorian delivers faith-filled speech with censorship attempt, after censorship attempt. Free speech case of student versus school boards near settlement finish line. This is just a sample of, of some of the things that are available. And I just think it's good to have a full perspective. So, um, the website is called National School Board Leadership Council. And um, I just, I'll just read from one of those, um, one of those cases. School district sued for socially transitioning a girl to a boy against parents' wishes. Parents of a girl enrolled in a Houston high school are suing the school district, the superintendent, and the school principal for allowing teachers and staff to socially transition their daughter to a boy. The Alliance Defending Freedom has sent a letter to the Houston Independent School District back in March seeking confirmation that various staff had stopped treating one couple's daughter as, had stopped treating one couples, couple's daughter as a boy. The couple Sarah and Terry Osborne had discovered a masculine name on one of their daughter's assignments and eventually learned Bel Air High School staff had been treating the daughter as a boy for several months. And that's just one, one of the articles. So I thought you might find that interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any uh board response to the open forum? Seeing no hands. I will say, I uh had planned to attend the twenty twenty-six um National Association School Board. It, it will be the third time um that I've attended. And the reason why I go is to expand um my knowledge of what's going on in the nation, and I have found it very helpful. Um, it is not a place where this board is in lockstep with what they believe. We are a independent district and we have our independent thought and independent idea, ideas. And uh, we independently do what's best for Rapid City Area Schools. So to make the association that we are in lockstep with uh, with the Nationals um Associated School Board would be inaccurate. Right. Any other thoughts? Student reports. Ms. Braun from Steven High School, you're up.
Alright, good evening, board members. Tonight I wanna revisit something I told you about a few weeks ago. Stevens students completed a means of participation survey where they answered questions on various means of participation and whether they were helpful in keeping them engaged during class time. Here are some of the results of that survey. Eighty-eight percent report that expectations during discussions are clear or mostly clear. The highest rated participation strategy was turn and talk, followed by everyone writes. Ninety percent of students report that everyday routines are very clear or mostly clear, and ninety percent report that everyone has a fair chance to participate in class. Our administrators will now take this data and work with the district data support to compile individual teacher data and give targeted support. This study will inform teachers on what strategies they can use to engage students during class time. And some events going on at Stevens include upcoming band orchestra and choir concerts. Our fine arts department is hard at work putting together Christmas concerts for Stevens students and their families. As a member of the symphonic band myself, I know I am excited to play songs like Sleigh Ride and Minor Alterations, which is essentially a medley of Christmas carols if they were written by Tim Burton. On November nineteenth, our Salt Group hosted Coach Floor, the head football coach of the school mines. Salt is a, is our student athlete leadership team. We are athletes nominated by our coaches for our leadership on our teams, and we meet once a month to discuss how we can better Stevens High School. Coach Floor spoke on recruitment and mental health in sports, providing our athletes with a sneak peek into the wide world of college sports. And I wanna take this opportunity to shout out the class of nineteen seventy-four. They have given a generous donation to Stevens High School, and we will be using the money to rebrand and refurbish the mats in the gym to continue improving our school. And I also wanna shout out our knowledgeable teams. They finished up their season with an impressive record. Stevens had five teams compete in the knowledgeable this season, and four of those teams qualified for the regional finals meet. In the four regular season meets, Stevens took gold four times, silver three times, and bronze four times. At the regional finals meet, Stevens won, took first place, being strong competition from Central Spearfish, STM, and Douglas. On Friday, the staff at Stevens are competing in the staff knowledgeable showdown. Mrs. Hafner requested that the questions be at about a middle school level. Before you giggle too much, here's an example question from the knowledgeable finals, courtesy of our knowledgeable coach, Mr. Julius. Whose work in the early twentieth century creating new kinds of rice and wheat is thought to be, is thought to have saved nearly a hundred million people from starvation? Norman Borlaug. If you didn't know that, I didn't either, so it's okay. And our staff spotlight this month is Shelby Schwint. She is our activities secretary here at Stevens. She's a graduate of Central High School and has been at Stevens for two years. She loves to see our students thrive in their activities and see all their hard work pay off. In her free time, she acts with the Seraphim Community Theater. Thank you so much for your time today.
Alright, thank you. Very good report. Board, any questions for Ms. Braun? Ms. Clapham.
Uh, maybe just for the community. See, do you, when is the winter band concert? I know I have it written down, but.
It's Thursday, December eighteen.
Excellent. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our community to support and to celebrate holidays.
Anyone else? Hey, at this time, we'll get a report from Ms. Bonnness, Central High School.
Good evening, board. I hope everyone had an enjoyable Thanksgiving. Fresh from the break, Central is back in full swing this week with activities and holiday fun to look forward to for students and faculty. Beginning tomorrow, students will have the opportunity to purchase candy canes with personalized messages attached for teachers, friends, or family members. All of proceeds from this will be collected by student council and reinvested into the school and students. Also, in the realm of fundraising and connection, families are invited to attend Central's first ever winter bingo night on December fifteenth with our feeder, middle, and elementary schools. The event will offer a multitude of prizes generously provided by local businesses. Bingo cards will be either two dollars or a donation of two canned food items, which will then be distributed throughout the community during the holiday season. Looking forward to this coming weekend, this Saturday, December sixth, from ten AM to two PM, our photography club will be offering holiday portraits at the school, open to everyone in the community. During this time, the visual arts department will also be hosting a student art show and a cake auction to raise support for their programs. On December twelfth, Central will host its annual blood drive from nine thirty AM to four PM in the wrestling room. The Christmas blood drive has historically been a very large event for the school, especially because it is held during months with a higher demand. I have personally donated at this blood drive in the past, and it was an amazing experience that I would highly encourage others to take part in if able. Regarding the facility itself, the progress of renovating the school library is advancing steadily. Many students, myself included, have noticed that the doors are opening as new furniture arrives, and we are eagerly looking forward to accessing the space once again following the winter break. Zooming in on activities, students from Central's orchestra performed music at multiple community locations over the break, which was a joyful and fun experience for all involved. Also in news for orchestra, it was recently announced that members will be traveling to Chicago in March to perform at the World Strides Heritage Festival. This is an incredible opportunity for our musicians and also great representation for the school's music department. Um, and then this coming weekend, the speech and debate team will competing, will be competing at a tournament in Spearfish, while the wrestling team will commute to Montana to represent Central there. And with that, um, I say once a cobbler, always a cobbler. Thank you.
Alright, very good. Another very good report. Board, any questions for Mrs. Bonnness? Uh, Ms. Clapham?
I have a question. Um, so the photos on December sixth, where, do you know where in the building they are?
I believe, I was told like just the main lobby, but I'm not sure which part of the building. I can get back to you on that.
And you said from ten to four?
Yes.
I know lots of families that are looking for holiday pictures.
Yeah. Ten to two.
Ten to two. And then when is bingo night? Bingo night will be, um, December fifteenth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you very much. This time we have our superintendent report. Dr. Thompson.
I have three short.
I have three short topics that I want to share with you tonight. Um, starting with some information regarding a federal tax credit scholarship program, then uh, some changes made to the United States Department of Education and ending with information regarding our strategic planning study session in January. You probably already saw the news, but Governor Roden held a press conference a couple of weeks ago where he shared that South Dakota will be opting into the federal tax credit scholarship program, which is a part of the big beautiful bill legislation. Um, that will provide families the opportunity to receive a seventeen hundred dollar federal tax credit um, if they donate to a designated scholarship granting organization. And it is important to note that the governor did say that uh, public schools would be included in this process. Um, that is something that we will want to monitor very closely because we believe if public schools are included, uh, families could donate to Rapid City Area Schools Foundation for items such as after-school tutoring and other after-school programs, um, books, technology and other equipment that are fee-based, as well as dual credit and advanced placement fees. Specific rules still need to be drafted by the US Department of Treasury before the governor can take official action and then our state will have to set rules. So we're really waiting to see what that will look like. However, in the meantime, the school administrators of South Dakota, as well as our own legislative committee will be watching this very closely to ensure that public schools and our local school foundation are included. Um, this could be a great opportunity for our patrons because tax credits are actually more advantageous to taxpayers than tax deductions. Um, essentially, the federal government would give taxpayers a credit or a dollar-for-dollar reduction of their federal taxes when they donate to these scholarship granting organizations. Um, it's a reduction of your tax bill directly, not just taxable income. So it's a one hundred percent or dollar-for-dollar reduction. So if a family gave seventeen hundred dollars in a donation, they'd get a seventeen hundred dollar tax credit or reduction in their tax bill. Uh, moving on, the US Department of Education, um, Linda McMahon, US Secretary of Education, announced that several departments from the um, Department of Education will be moving to the Department of Labor. Uh, be it an inter-agency agreement, um, giving the Department of Labor a much larger role in education moving forward. Uh, some of the programs that will be shifted, um, that directly affect us include Titles One A, Title One D, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, um, Twenty First Century Community Learning Grants, our homeless education and some competitive grants, which actually includes our literacy grant that we just received. Um, so the Department of Labor would be taking over all of those grant competitions, overseeing the program administration, the payment systems and providing schools with technical assistance. We have been told that schools will continue to receive the same amount of funding. They will just be delivered through the Department of Labor. We've also been told that grants eligibility requirements will remain the same, as well as our federal contacts, which leads us to believe that many of those staff members will be moving over to the Department of Labor, which would definitely be helpful in the transition process. Uh, this move is supposed to increase state and local authority by streamlining federal operations and empowering local decision-making. It is also supposed to improve academic outcomes by aligning education and workforce systems so students are better prepared for college, careers, military service and citizenship. I will feel a lot better about those statements and promises once we have more details about what this transition will look like, um, and how things will be operating. Uh, we really don't know what any of that looks like at this point. We've just been married aware that the changes will be coming. And finally, I wanted to visit about a study session coming up. I have been working with Casey Wachowiak at the Studer Group, Education Group, um, talking about our strategic planning process and how we could incorporate more um, board and community involvement. And throughout our conversations, we felt like it would be advantageous to have a longer amount of time with the board. So have tentatively scheduled, if it works with all of you, a full day retreat on January fourteenth. Um, Casey Wachowiak can actually be here that date to facilitate the meeting. It would include um, a review of our first semester data, um, as well as our progress on our short cycle action steps and goals. And then a collaborative process with the board and the admin team to look at setting our second semester goals, action steps and metrics. Um, I believe that we should be able to incorporate many of the priorities and focuses that the board talked about a couple of meetings ago within either the goals, the action plans or the metrics um, and really better aligning the work that we're doing. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have. Although on some of those topics, we all have more questions than answers, so.
Uh, Mrs. Clapham.
My one question, and again, you may not have the answer, but so in theory, that tax credit like would start the year twenty twenty-six, like January first, if you gave on January second to, you know, whatever scholarship fund like that would be a credit for the next year, because I feel like it has, like it has to go on the tax year, I would think, not like our fiscal year, so I would guess it's.
It is on the tax year, but I'm hearing it's a year out.
Okay.
So it's not an immediate thing because all of that rulemaking has to occur. So I believe it's the twenty-seven fiscal year.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for Dr. Thompson? Mrs. Stephenson.
Um, not a question, a comment. I uh, appreciate the scheduling of the study session. I think that diving into that and getting a little more, giving the opportunity to discuss what our priorities are and actually incorporating them, so you're not working to two different plans, um, makes a lot of sense. So thank you for making that happen.
Hey, any, anybody else? Alright, thank you, Dr. Thompson, for that report. This time, Mr. Sassy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so as we discussed last board meeting, board, um, we were gonna start our series of budget discussions and um, this was actually a practice uh, that we started over the last couple of years. I think there's been um, a lot of value to it in terms of the board getting a, a very good big picture, um, shot at the budget as opposed to just getting a ton of information at one time and, and not really understanding what's happening. Also got good feedback from the community regarding um, some of these presentations and, and being able to dig in a little bit deeper and understand things a little bit better. So uh, tonight, we're gonna talk property valuation. Um, it, just a few comments regarding the bud, budget process. I, I tell people, um, the budget process never really ends. We're always monitoring, analyzing, preparing, looking at, at uh, numbers as we're moving into the future. Um, typically, the, the picture starts to become much clearer in that January, February timeframe, um, as we start to get a better idea of what our budget utilization looks like and then obviously what's happening at the legislative level. Um, but even at this point in the year, we can start looking at certain factors that we know are going to shape our budget for the next year and start to get an idea of what that's going to look like. And um, typically in those situations, the revenue indicators run far ahead of our expenditure indicators. Obviously, we are, um, even in the February, March timeframe, still cleaning up negotiations, which is really the, the primary source of expenditure increase. Uh, but we, we do have a good idea of what revenue looks like, um, even in these months as we're, we're moving into the winter months. So uh, tonight, we're gonna look at property valuation. This is a major revenue indicator. Um, of course, property valuation, meaning uh, all of the assessed valuation of property falling within the boundaries of the district. Um, so that is assessed on a yearly basis. Uh, typically, we receive those finalized figures in the early November timeframe. And this process determines the movement of what happens with our property tax revenue. So up, down, all those things are really determined with, with this process. Um, it makes up about sixty-two to sixty-five percent of all the revenue in our major funds, so general fund, capital, outlet and special education. And again, the valuation movement has a major impact on the budget. Uh, we've talked often about how that uh, piece is tied into the state aid formula and its impact on the overall resources. Um, so this is really one of our, our primary revenue indicators that we look at. So, taking a look at the uh, valuation for twenty, taxes payable twenty twenty-six, so here on the right, um, this is the actual worksheet that comes through from the Department of Revenue with all of our uh, property valuation split into, of course, the uh, property classifications. Um, Mead County, the, the, the small amount of property that the district uh, has lying in Mead County boundaries and then the Pennington County side of that. Uh, here on the left, just some highlights. So overall valuation of district property increased five point six two percent from pay twenty-five. Owner occupied, which is of course residential homes, uh, makes up sixty-one point two percent of the overall valuation. Um, other, which is primarily the commercial category, makes up thirty-seven point one four percent. Here in our district, ag makes up a very small percentage at about point three nine percent. And then utility, which is primarily the uh, various utility uh, areas that, that we have lying within our boundaries, makes up about one point two five percent. So our district is really impacted by what's happening with the owner occupied in the other categories. And that becomes very, very important as we look at how changes to the levy in particular impact the overall amount of local effort. So uh, this is a very important part of this process. Um, max levies are set on a yearly basis through the legislative process. So as the um, legislature is playing out in peer, they're discussing uh, what's going to happen with, with levies and how those change on a yearly basis. That has a major impact on the total amount of local effort or revenue driven into the individual funds. As you will see on this chart, all levies were reduced from the pay twenty-five to pay twenty-six year. In particular, uh, the two levies that again have a massive impact on our district's valuation, owner occupied and other, uh, were reduced by the greatest amount. So this looks like a very minor adjustment. However, um, as you're talking about a, a very, very large valuation, um, it becomes very, very important very quickly. So, um, owner occupied, reduced by point one six one, other reduced by point three three three. And you get an idea of how that impacts as we talk uh, specifically about um, what the local effort estimate is going to look like. So again, valuation increased about five point six two percent. Uh, total valuation sitting just over fourteen and a half billion. Our five-year valuation increase is fifty-eight point four percent. So again, we've seen this really rapid increase in valuation, um, over the last five to ten years. Um, even though we saw a bit of a slowdown this year, and it sounds very strange saying that five point six two percent is a slowdown because there's many districts around the state that never grew at that type of rate. Um, however, given what we've seen from a five-year average valuation increase of eleven point seven percent, uh, we did see a, a slowdown this year. Looking specifically at pay twenty-six general fund local effort estimate, right now we have that at about fifty-one point four million. And that is a point one seven percent increase over pay twenty-five. That can seem confusing, right? Because if the overall valuation increases at five point six two percent, one would assume that the local effort estimate should increase somewhere around that. However, as we flash back to again, where the greatest impact happened in terms of the individual levies, classification levies on a year-over-year basis, the two areas that were reduced most significantly were owner occupied and other. And keep in mind, that makes up about ninety-seven percent of our overall valuation. So those levies in those situations have a, a, a great impact on what is actually happening in terms of local effort coming into the general fund. So really, uh, we're seeing a much slower increase due to those reduced levies, um, even though we still saw a fairly aggressive increase in our overall valuation. Sped special education levy looks different than that. Um, the pay twenty-six sped local effort estimate is sitting at about twenty-one point one million. That's a three point seven seven percent increase over pay twenty-five. And that again seems like much more of a natural correlation. Um, and the reason that that is, even though we did see a decrease in this sped levy, it was a much more minor decrease and the sped levy, levy is not taking into account all the different classifications of, of property. It is taking the total valuation times the sped levy. So the uh, total valuation increase has a much more direct correlation to what the local effort increase is going to look like in the sped fund. So key takeaways. Property valuations are increasing, though at a slower rate this year. Um, local effort to the general fund is really gonna be flat year-over-year, uh, a very minimal increase of about eighty thousand dollars. Um, and then sped local effort is increasing approximately four percent. And again, that's a, a much more direct correlation to um, the overall valuation increase. Okay, turning to capital outlet, um, the primary thing to point out when we look at capital outlet is that it now has a different formula and it's no longer a levy calculation. So in the past, um, the, the capital outlet, um, calculation looked much like we just looked at where there was a specific levy laid out. Um, now, we work around what's called the general rule formula in capital outlet. And the general rule formula says that capital outlet revenue cannot grow by more than a district's growth plus three percent on a year-over-year basis. And in this case, growth is defined as any new construction, which has occurred in the last year within school district boundaries. So, that formula is highly focused on new growth or new construction happening within the boundaries. Um, however, that overall revenue growth is still subject regardless of any other factors. So your, your growth percentage could be a million percent. And at the end of the day, it's still subject to the overarching three dollar per one thousand evaluation limitation. So there's sort of a, a dual ceiling in terms of, of capital outlet. There's the general rule formula. However, there's still the overarching three dollar per one thousand that a district can never exceed. That's very confusing. And I think oftentimes, um, can really lead to misconceptions for our stakeholders in, in understanding what all of that means and um, what we see happening in terms of valuation increases versus what the district is actually receiving. And this is really a, a good indicator of that. So as we take a step further and dig a little deeper into our max capital outlet request for pay twenty-six, we see that that number is thirty-two point six million. And this is a four point seven percent increase over pay twenty-five. And this is where we see this uh, 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 specific formula play out. So the growth factor for our district was one point seven percent. And as we work that through the general rule formula, we take one point seven percent plus three percent and we see where we, we determine our four point seven percent growth increase. So that growth increase is a little more in line with what we've seen in, in recent history. Uh, this is a valuation analysis that I put together every year. Uh, the top line is the total valuation increase of, of all property within the district. And then the second line is the growth increase. And then I just highlighted the difference between those two numbers. And what this does is help us understand of the overall valuation increase, what we are seeing from new growth in that uh, uh, comparison. And so you'll see here back to pay twenty nineteen, um, we're floating around the two to three percent per year. Uh, we did pop up last year in, in pay twenty-five to about five and a half percent, but this. But this one point seven percent is a little more in line with with what we've seen recently. This is where this picture starts to get really confusing. What we see happening, and and this is like many things we talk about, unfavorable for our district's particular situation, is that we see a growing gap between total valuation and new growth. And what this does is severely restrict how our capital outlay revenue grows on a year over year basis. So you can see early on, both in the valuation analysis and here in our capital outlay funding. Oh, excuse me, I should explain this very quickly. So this is capital outlay funding comparing what the overarching three dollar per one thousand max is versus the max request per formula. So you can see, as the difference between the total valuation and the growth narrows, the gap between the three dollar per one thousand max and the max request per the formula narrows. As that gap grows, the gap between those two numbers grows. And what we've seen over the past several years has been that gap significantly widen and continue to widen. So of course, here in pay twenty two, that gap was about a million dollars. That jumps up significantly in pay twenty three as we see major growth around current property and not new growth. And then it just continues to widen as we see that trend continue to play out up to the point in pay twenty six where we're into the ten point seven million dollar range.
Quay.
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to the Blue Ribbon Task Force, were we able to collect all of that? Or was there always a max?
So there there was a levy formula that was similar to what you saw around the general fund where every year the legislature would say, okay, the levy is going to, the capital outlay levy is going to change by X. There was always the three dollar per one thousand maximum. So that is not a new thing. However, I think, well, excuse me, let me continue to. Did you have any other questions? Because we'll touch on, I think, where you're headed with that. Okay. This is just a graphical representation of what that's look like. So again, in in these early years where we saw a more narrow gap between the three dollar per one thousand and max requests, we saw a a more narrow gap in the overall numbers. Again, that's continued to widen here in these later years. And and now we have this very significant gap between those two numbers. There has been legislation brought forward in the past few years that would help with this situation. As a matter of fact, the S B S D currently says a, excuse me, currently has a standing resolution, which is under section C, School Finance Number Three. And it's regarding capital outlay adjustments. And essentially, what they say in that standing resolution is that, given the volatility that districts have seen over many years in terms of construction prices and some of those things, that districts should be allowed a greater degree of of flexibility to be able to push closer to that overall three dollar per one thousand limitation. So, for example, if the statute was changed to allow the general rule formula increase or the three dollar per one thousand evaluation, whichever was greater, it would allow a district like ours to access those really badly needed capital outlay funds without exceeding that overall limitation or even somewhere in between there. If there was some type of hold harmless where if your valuation increased at a specific percentage, you could move closer to that three dollar per one thousand max. Any type of of latitude in in terms of the ability to push closer to that max would be incredibly helpful for a district like ours in our particular situation. So we'll keep an eye on that and and see where that goes. I don't, I've not heard that there's going to be any any legislation brought forward this year to address that. However, we'll see where it goes and and continue to discuss this situation. Key takeaways around capital outlay. The funding formula is very confusing. There's there's no denying that, especially having multiple limitations. I think increases the the difficulty of understanding that. What what I think in particular causes confusion in that situation is that increasing property valuations are not a straight line to more capital outlay revenue. And I think that's difficult for folks to understand when they see their tax bill going up and 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 don't understand how that is not resulting in more resources for our district. Obviously, the capital outlay formula restricts our district from seeing significant revenue increases. And like a lot of things we face, it's likely going to require some type of legislative solution in the future for us to to right the ship and and be able to access those resources. So that was a a very quick look at property tax. Next subject, we're going to go over enrollment and state aid. I will just very briefly comment on the situation because you're going to get a big dose of it at our next meeting. Dr. Thompson also mentioned it, very disappointing news in the governor's budget address in terms of recommendation for no increase to state aid funding. I I, again, I won't talk a lot about this. I I do want to mention one thing that I I think is very important in terms of listening to his rationale around why they were going that direction. He referenced declining enrollment statewide. And then also discussed the idea that that in in his opinion, the state has overpaid inflationary increases over the last several years. Well, I think that's really misguided thinking. Enrollment is the primary driver of that formula. And in the formula, it's a self balancing mechanism, meaning that as enrollment increases or decreases, the overall level of state aid, and again, because of the way the 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 formula is structured, the overall level of level of resources for a district is going to increase or decrease. That is really a completely different discussion than what the legislature does on a year to year basis. The the primary issue that the legislature is addressing when they say we're going to increase two percent or three or decrease or hold steady or whatever is, at the heart of it, really an inflationary adjustment. And more recently, because of the legis legislation passed last year in which the legislature tied the increase directly to teacher salaries, it's really a reflection of of what's happening at the state level in terms of increasing the the teacher salaries in our state. And so I I think that it's misguided thinking to to hook the lack of an increase, I I believe his quote was, when you see declining enrollment, this is what happens. Well, declining enrollment is going to balance itself in that formula just by means of of pulling the overall level level of resources down. That doesn't address the idea that school districts, like every other business and every other individual in our nation, have to deal with a very difficult inflationary environment right now. And having a a no increase to state aid makes that much more difficult. And so I'll stop there. I I obviously, there's a lot of process to play out. And hopefully, we have some really good people that go to peer and and they will go to bat for education. And we'll see what happens with that. But obviously disappointing news. Yes, ma'am.
And I understand about this even this much.
Me too.
Benefits, like when we look at those limits on capital outlay, like they obviously are intended to benefit or like something. So what is on the other side of that? Like, obviously, it's that our district in particular, it doesn't benefit. And actually, the taxpayer doesn't see a great benefit on the other end. So who does it benefit to have these kind of like dampening mechanisms?
Yeah. So again, I think the the rationale behind the change to the formula, much like the the change to the regular state aid formula, was rooted in good things and and wanting to ensure that there were safety guards in place for taxpayers. However, when you look at unique situations like this, where we have indicators that are essentially pointing different directions, our community continues to grow, overall valuation i- is is very, very high. What what we've seen recently, and this is not, this has nothing to do with our district or you as a board. This is a a process that is totally out of our hands, is that we've seen this very rapid valuation increase around existing property to the point that it has, I I think, you know, watered down the new growth that's that's happening around us. And so the the thought process behind the idea that, well, you're going to get growth plus three percent i- is really one that 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 much like the regular state aid formula says, well, if you're not growing, then you don't need as much money, right? Or if your enrollment is falling, then you you don't need as much money or you or we're going to remove money. And that sounds great on paper. In reality, that is a very, very difficult thing for a district like ours to deal with. And I I think, to me, the best example of that is what we see happening in our community in terms of the major growth on the eastern side of our community and us as a district needing to be able to respond to that and and build new facilities and update facilities and expand facilities. And this formula doesn't recognize something like that. So all that recognizes is, well, your growth wasn't at a certain percentage, even though per the the overall formula, three dollar per one thousand, we have a a lot of resources that we could access to respond to to the way our community is shifting and moving. So, you know, who does it it benefits? That's a great question. I I I don't know. I think you could certainly understand how there could be communities in which the situation is playing out well for them, just like some communities are benefiting from the current state aid formula. However, I I I think, a- again, it it doesn't take into consideration what's actually happening within a district. And and that, to me, is a a real problem.
So it it doesn't benefit the taxpayers. It's not like the three percent. We we could have taken this much, but we can't because it's three percent. And that other money is staying in your pockets, taxpayers. It is?
It is.
Okay, so that's who it benefits.
Yeah. How however, I think the, ye- yes, you're right. The really important thing to point out is I reverse engineered the numbers. And, you know, that ten point seven million dollars sounds like a a huge amount of money. However, when you spread that over a fourteen point four five billion dollar valuation, it's like a point zero zero one cent increase to to the majority of our our stakeholders. So for us, being able to access five million or seven million or ten million dollars more in capital outlay per year would make a significant difference in our ability to address capital outlay needs and facility needs. And it's a really minimal impact to to the taxpayers. So I I think that's important to point out, but you're right.
Mr. Urban?
I think your terminology of misguided concerning Governor Roden's budget address today is really kind. I think it feels intentionally misleading. Because I think to people who don't understand how the formula works, that logic of they're seeing fewer students makes a whole lot of sense. But like you said, the formula doesn't work like that. It already takes care of that. So it's unfortunate because I think most people will hear that and think that it makes sense. And it doesn't. And then I had a question about the general fund property tax. So the the levies are set by the legislature. They decreased. How do they determine, again, that it decreased? Do they have a formula? I mean, why did that happen?
So they primarily work with the department, excuse me, Department of Revenue in terms of the overall valuation of like all state property. And they're looking at, obviously, a a ton of factors as they're making those adjustments. But those are brought forward and and recommendations are made through through the D O R in terms of how they're adjusting those levies. You know, just to say it plainly, we're a a tax adverse state. And so there's always attempts made to reduce the the overall levies. I think that, again, to me, this becomes a major consideration in terms of property tax relief and and how those bills are working. And again, a lot of that is being already addressed through through these types of factors and how they're adjusting levies and pulling that down. And so, you you know, when you think about the, again, the the situation playing out in our district where overall valuation is growing at almost six percent, but because of the reduced levies, that revenue is going to be flat. I mean, that's a that's a significant amount of property tax reduction that that our stakeholders are are getting. And that's, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. But again, that's the impact of these levy changes on a year to year basis.
And that's not typical, right? I mean, have we seen a decline in the levy in recent years?
No, no, I wouldn't. There's I think over the last several years, and and that's a really great question. I should put together a chart on that. We've seen primarily increases in the levies. Ag has gone down a few years in a row. But this is the first year that that I recall in recent history in which all levies have decreased. And again, I think that was a, in a lot of ways, a reflection of the conversation that was happening at the legislative level at that time.
I had a kind of just a, I want to make sure I'm I'm communicating correctly. So people say, why do you need more money? My property taxes keep going up and they've just kept going up. We know that in the general fund, their taxes have gone up, but what we are, what we get from their taxes has gone down. Their increased taxes just means that the state pays us less and they contribute more locally. We know that in capital outlay, yes, your taxes have gone up, but they haven't gone up to the school district nearly as i- in the same proportion because we're limited at three percent. Is there any fund that like actually has goes up in proportion to people's property taxes in this district?
I would say the fund closest, again, that 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 correlates most directly with the overall valuation increase is special education. And obviously, that's a much smaller fund than than like the general fund, for example. You know, in in this situation, when folks open their tax bill, they're going to see a very similar number to last year in terms of what their their district portion of that will look like. Obviously, the sped will go up minimally three point seven percent. Capital outlay will will go up a small amount. But in terms of the general fund levy, it'll look fairly flat. So their tax bill is going to look very similar to last year. So a- again, there's like so many aspects of that to to try to pull apart. And I think e- even within that five point six two percent overall valuation increase, you could have a a home on the west side versus the east side. And and your particular valuation increase could look very different between those two homes. And so there's just so many layers to it and and aspects to it. But again, I think the the primary point being that there is not a direct correlation to a valuation increase and what's happening with the with the district at an overall resource level. And again, next time, we'll we'll dive into the state aid side of that. And this has a direct impact on that as well, especially in a situation like we're going to see as we move into this budget year. If there is indeed a zero percent increase from the state and you have essentially a flat level of local effort, that's going to have a major impact in that formula as well. I don't know if I answered your question. I'm sorry.
No, I think you did.
Okay.
And then my comment is that this is just so incredibly frustrating. Like inflation is real. You know, the reason that these established property values have gone up is because of housing inflation. You know, the reason that these established property values have gone up is because of housing inflation. And our price, our costs to operate have gone up proportionately. And to imply that like, that somehow we're overfunded. I mean, I, you know, sometimes I feel like, boy, we can hardly keep up in my grocery bill, which is not, I don't want anybody to worry about the Stephenson's, but like, but but you know, like, it just feels kinda shocking how much it, how much more it costs to to just live in our town at this time. And to just know that our, the funding for our schools hasn't been proportionate to that, and we have to take care of our staff who are also struggling maybe more than the Stephenson's are. You know, I just, it uh, it is incredibly, it's very frustrating and very, very sad. Um, I hope that if it indeed, he does propose zero percent increase, that we maybe could rally some legislators to propose a bill to do the three percent or whatever is larger.
It is very frustrating. I I completely agree with you. I think that's um, you know, sometimes it can feel very much like the the deck is stacked against us and that we're sort of going uphill both ways. And so uh, again, I I tried to remind myself, there's a lot of process to play out. And uh, we do have a lot of good people in in Pier that um, are gonna go to bat for us and and uh, we'll see what happens, so.
Well, maybe we as a legislative committee can reach out and just kinda be like, hey, what's the game plan?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's gonna be a really important aspect of of pushing back against that and in showing, just as you said, Christine, I think that's a great point. This is a real situation. There is not a school district in this state, much less in this nation, that has faced a zero percent inflation over the last year. I mean, that's ridiculous in in every sense of the word. And so um, being able to illustrate that is gonna become really important. And so I'm gonna work on on uh, um, some good illustration of of what that looks like to show our legislators, this is a a real thing. And you expect us to pay people more and better, and that's that's an impossible goal when when you're saying that we have no inflation over the last year.
We share that goal. We just need the funding for it.
Absolutely.
Wow.
No, you make great points.
Is that, was that the?
That is the answer.
I don't know who to give credit for this knowledge, to either Ms. Clapham or yourself. And I apologize, I stepped out, so I don't know if this was mentioned. But you all have taught me about the economy of scale, that just because we have fewer students does not mean that we have fewer costs. And I will also echo the the word frustration and echo the word intentional. I would think that if I understand that, that there are way smarter people in Pier who would understand that. And so to verbalize that we're not giving you more money because you have less students, obviously, somebody doesn't know as much as I know, and I don't know a whole lot. So it 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 goes to, I mean, your mind just travels to, well, maybe it's on purpose because it's such an easy concept to under, well, maybe if you're not in the i- in the district in in education, you may not appreciate it. But it's a general business term, right? So that's uh, again, makes it frustrating and almost makes it, I won't say anybody's committing a crime, but Lucille, you got some explaining to.
You make a great point, and and I think at the, at the, at the most base level, you could break that situation down to um, and again, I I mean this respectfully, that that the the people who are making the decisions i- in these very important situations, not understanding the idea that that the enrollment aspect of that, again, is a self-balancing mechanism. Enrollment goes down, you're automatically, as a district, gonna have less resources. It goes up, you're automatically gonna have more resources. The 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 aspect that he is discussing is really the inflationary slash teacher compensation portion of that. And those are completely different things. And so I I think you make a great point, and at 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 the base level of that, not understanding that simple fact and 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 adding to that, that it's a much more complex situation than than just saying, well, you lost X amount of kids, X amount of money has to go in in our economy of scale, this economy of scale example. Um, i- it is very frustrating.
All right, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That report.
Appreciate it, board.
We have no conflict of int- interests. I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed agreements and M O U's.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed agreements and M O U's. Is there any discussion on any of the agreements? All right, Mrs. Stephenson?
Yeah, I just um, as we were, as I was served on the calendar committee, I had some discussions with some members of the calendar committee who said, it's unfortunate that we have to build a school calendar around not having kids in school for no, for election day next year, even though elections happen in approximately, I think, seven of our schools, and two of which are very well-suited to host elections and um, because they have community centers. So maybe five schools um, are making it so that the entire district can't have students in school on November fifth. And since we have a agreement, I'm um, not necessarily, I mean, this is, I know that that is not on this agreement, but I just wanted to bring it up and uh, get your take on whether that can change. I understand that next year, we built a calendar around it. We have agreements in place, but if in the future, if this board and if this district wants to make it a priority to try and get voting out of schools, not because I necessarily don't like voting in schools, but I've heard from enough people that it really is a problem in those particular schools. Um, it's pretty disruptive and um, so anyway, I'd like to just put that forth and see what your thoughts are on that.
I'll I'll make some comments, and Dr. Thompson, if you have any, please feel free. So yes, that has been a conversation in the past. Um, discussion between uh, local law enforcement and uh, the county and the district. The the idea of of trying to move polling places away from school districts was uh, well-supported at that time, given some of the um, security issues that were presented um, as well as the disruption to to school um, in students. Um, since then, uh, conversation uh, frankly, just sort of slowed down. I think revisiting that is is important, again, if if uh, uh, the board uh, wishes that we do so. Um, I think the county, um, although they are obviously going through some flux right now, um, would be open to that conversation. I think local law enforcement would be open to that. Uh, we talked about the idea of uh, perhaps uh, restricting that to our schools with community centers or or areas that could be completely locked away from the school that uh, had no traffic, foot traffic through or or those types of things. And and again, I think that given, you know, e- enough notice that the county would be agreeable to that too. So um, it it's a uh, uh, Dr. Thompson was able to work magic with the calendar and make it not an issue for next year. But I'm certainly more than happy to have that conversation as we move into the future. Focus on it.
I would just echo that. I think anytime we have an increase in traffic in our buildings, we have an increase in security issues. And one of the items on our agenda tonight is to approve a system that would help us control visitors in and out of the school system. So I think moving forward, working with the county to try and make changes would be advantageous, but we wanna make sure we're being good partners and giving them sufficient time to find alternate appropriate locations and all of those types of things.
Just a brief, I know at one point, and I think it was before Dr. Thompson's time, um, there was some discussion about those, the schools that are affected that them having a distance learning day. So like, that's just talking about different options and ideas, like I said, it was discussed long in the past as an option. And then I think too, when we look at as a board, it's something for us to think about. And when I was at um, National Convention in New Orleans, they talked about the fact when you are building new buildings, that schools are community buildings and those they very, the district, they were very intentional about creating spaces in new buildings that were, that you could absolutely block off from us. So I think as we look at a bond, new buildings, that I think would be very advantageous for whomever is sitting in those seats at that point to look at that as part of the design, because it also then invites community into things for like events and things without having to you know, worry about the security of the whole building. So like, future thinking, I think that would be wise on our part.
All right, any other discussion on our proposed agreements and M O U's? All right, all in favor of approving uh, the proposed agreements and M O U signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries. I will enter, oh, is there any uh, consent agenda item that a board member would like pulled for discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pro- uh, to approve the proposed agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Items for board information. We'll start with committee reports. Any reports? Okay, Mrs. Stephenson?
Sure, I'll go first. I attended the Title VI PAC meeting um, on November nineteenth at Rapid Valley. Uh, Walt Swan was there as well. Let's see, there was um, a presentation about, from the R C A S Districtwide Beha- Behavior Team um, and a short Q and A. There um, they talked about the different subcommittees they have. Uh, they have a committee about right, making a recommendation to the district um, and how to go about having a director of Indian Ed instead of a manager. They have a committee for the feathering ceremonies that will take place at the end of the year. And then they have a committee for the Wa'chipes when and where they'll take place and how they can increase attendance at those. What I think I uh, oh, there is a um, there has been an M O U for services for Oyate to provide health in our school, or healthcare, health services inside our schools. What I thought was kind of the most exciting was the students and the teachers and the PAC members who talked about the district representation in L N I, the different ways that the district is represented. We um, have several schools from Stevens to Knollwood, having hand game teams. Central has several things. There's a wrestling team. Both high schools have wrestling teams. There's a cross-country team. I think there was just stuff that I didn't quite under, I didn't quite know how big of a presence that we have in the district. And then, of course, next year, it sounds like we might have basketball, which is very exciting. So that was a a big topic of discussion and the um, oh, I remember the last thing I wanted to ask you all is that at Knollwood, they um, they do a blanket drive at Christmas and it give every student a blanket before they go home for Christmas bro- break. So if any of you wanna donate blankets, they're just accepting them up there. Um, new blankets, any size, there's not a lot of guidelines for it, but just to send some kid home with something warm over the break.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stephenson? All right, Mrs. Clapham?
Uh, yes, just gonna report for community outreach. We met on, I think it, no, it wasn't the twenty-seventh, on the twentieth. Um, and just briefly, we sort of have our R C A A listening session on December tenth. And then we will have the student sessions at Stevens High School on January twenty-eighth. And we were kind of overwhelmed, so we're gonna reschedule the ones at Central, but they are going to happen. Uh, some some board members will be attending the Critical Issues Luncheon um, on the fourth this week. And a couple of points just brought up for a discussion that with the new, the news of the Sanford Hospital opening up, like, how will that affect our district? And as far as students and size, so that we should keep it on the radar and uh, collaborate with Sanford leadership because a a hundred hospital beds requires a lot of staff, and those, many of those staff will have children that need to go to school somewhere. And uh, we just continued the Vote Yes campaign, did launched its social media page. And that, uh, I think we did send out invite for the L N I red carpet. Um, for anybody who didn't go before, it's a really fun, full of energy event, so we encourage people to come. It does make up for a little bit of a long evening, because it's before the board meeting on Tuesday, so get that. Um, but other than that, nothing huge that you guys don't already know about, just all the community engagement and reminder that in your emails, if you go back and look from Sheila, that all of the holiday performances from K through twelve are in your email. So anybody who has time to make even one or two, that'd be great.
I just wanna remind the board too, that the Hats and Mittens Party is this Saturday. Um, and you should have the details of that in your inbox. And then also, we had sent out, if you can't make it to the Critical Issues Luncheon, a good opportunity to talk to people in the community about our district would be at the Elevate Mixer, which is a week from tonight, and we don't have a school board meeting. So we should all go there and advocate for public education so that everybody knows what we're up to and knows how to support us.
Hey, any questions for Ms. Clapham? All right, Mrs. Urban?
Okay, we had a quick meeting um, for facilities last week, and the biggest news is that um, our company that's working on the Rapid Valley um, expansion, Skull, is going to put a bid out for um, a large mechanical electric equipment procurement. These are items that that take a long time to get in, like twelve to twenty-five weeks. So they really have to put the bid out now so they can get them in time to do the construction. The big thing to know about this is that they're gonna be really expensive. So it's kind of like there's no turning back at this point because they are ordering this equipment. It's gonna cost us a lot, so um, but that's good news because we want this project to move forward. So that is moving right along. Um, as Ms. Bondz- Mones pointed out, the library is almost done. And so we talked about that, hopefully getting a tour of that in the coming weeks um, or month. Um, just moving those furniture pieces in, so that's exciting. I think that's about it for me.
Any questions for Ms. Urban? All right, thank you, Ms. Rafferty.
Yes, um, for the Rapid City Public School Foundation, the Day of Giving started today. Well, it started, I think, a week ago, but um, so um, join us starting today, a Day of Giving. They also have um, a Q R code right here that you can donate. Um, they're looking for participation from um, school district leaders and Rapid City area school principals. Um, it's not about how much you give, it's about getting everybody together. And even if you can just donate a dollar, it makes a huge difference. I'm not sure of the deadline of this either.
All right, any questions for Ms. Rafferty? Mrs. Clapham?
I forgot that we had a very brief legislative committee. Um, it was just a Zoom for about a half an hour, and we uh, discussed potential legislation and just kind of where as a board and as a district, our priorities uh, lie, looking at basically side by side, the idea of a a an enrollment averaging bill versus looking at a possible like zero percent interest loan like Douglas um, had last year. And the the consensus, and even talking to other board members, is basically that the an averaging enrollment bill is probably gonna be easier to get more support behind. And so it's taking baby steps in our first year that we're looking to really be very directly active, that that's likely the direction that we will go. And also the fact that that really wouldn't harm any other districts. And so that would probably keep, prevent people from kind of arguing against us on that. And so we'll be talking to local legislatures about um, possibly sponsoring something like that. That's where we are.
Any questions for anybody, any committee reports? We do have an update. Mrs. Stephenson will no longer be able to um, be on the committee. They meet third, or yeah, they meet Thursday at um, in the afternoon, seven thirty.
Thursday at eight in the morning um, once a month. Typically over Zoom. Typically over Zoom. Or typically you can join over Zoom. It's an hour.
Those of you that couldn't hear, Mrs. Clap, Clapham asked if we wanted to slap fight for.
Oh, gosh.
No, just look it up. Okay, well, okay. So we got it covered. I thought it was at night. But in the morning, okay, so one of us.
I appreciate that.
All right. Committee reports, are we done with that? All right, anybody has an other? All right, Ms. Clapham, is your hand still up? Okay, Mrs. Stephenson.
I, I see that the invocation is back on the agenda. I, I want to register that and just make it known that I'm not completely comfortable with the invocation being on the agenda. I'm, I'm weary of separation of church and state. And also of just trying to make sure that everybody feels that they are welcome in this district, no matter what their beliefs are. And I don't want a message, I don't want, want it to be perceived that this board has any sort of bias. Towards one faith or another, or a lack of faith, or against a lack of faith. So I'm, I, I wanted to register that I'm, I'm not completely supportive of having the invocation on. That said, it's not something that I, I need to make a big deal out of. I just want to be very clear to the public that anybody can give the invocation. Is that right?
I think the best thing for any community person to do and for everybody is to go read the policy. The invocation po, policy. And it clearly spells out who can, what the process. But to directly answer your question, yes, anybody can call the office to. To request to be on the invocation.
And then that was my second question. So is the procedure now, if someone wants to give an invocation, to call, to email? Who should they email? When should they email?
Again, I don't, I have not memorized the policy, so all those instructions are in the policy. But yes, to answer your question directly, you can call Sheila to be. To be put on the, on the, on the agenda and that process was followed tonight.
So the, the policy has the procedure for getting on the agenda? Okay, I wonder if we could link that for people to, so that they know, or if we could make that. I mean, searching for policies is not easy in this district. But anyway, in any case, so they can email Sheila and get on the agenda. And will we be keeping like a waiting list? Are we drawing from a hat if a lot of people do?
I don't know what was done before. I guess they would just go, because it's only two times a month. And so if the month that you want to do it is full, I guess you can move, Sheila, you can move them on down. And till, you know, there's an opening if it's, if it's crowded.
Okay, thanks. I just want to be transparent about how to get on there and that anybody of any faith could prevent, present the invocation.
And let me add to that again for transparency and clarification. I, the board president is responsible for the, the agenda. Along with the superintendent and the business manager, we put together the agenda. The, when I first got on the board, the board approved to have an invocation at the board meeting. We were doing it for a while and we stopped doing it because of lack of participation. And so if nobody calls, then there's nobody on it. I personally feel that it's in, important. It's important for me, I think it's important for the district. And again, if you look at the policy, it is not limiting, limited to any culture, any denomination, any particular person. It's open to anybody that has the desire and call. So I was the one that, that wanted to have it back at least this time. And again, we'll see, if it's, if no one calls, then it may or may not be back on every, every agenda.
I just looked at the policy and it says, those interested in providing the invocation, they send a request to the district secretary. So in my mind, that would be, they know where.
I would think so. No. Okay, any questions about that? Mrs. Clapham? Oh, no, yes, but your hand, yeah, your hand.
Um, I just wanted to, we had a little bit of discussion and I think it was in the notes from leadership, just to sort of take the temperature of. So at one time, there's, everything in education swings, right? At one time, we were having like study sessions, like every available Tuesday there was, and we were meeting every Tuesday and people felt kind of overwhelmed by it. And then we've really pulled back. A lot of that I do think comes from, Dr. Thompson has a lot of really great communication, so there's not necessarily as many things to be, need to be communicated. However, I know that there are some board members who have, including myself, who have felt that some of our meetings have gone. You know, it's like, oh, it's hour three, we're tired. We don't necessarily feel like we're giving our best because we're worn out. And so I just kind of wanted to bring up that we can like go back to having, even if it's once a month. But the thing that was discussed in leadership is, we don't want to have a study session for the sake of having it. But if there are particular topics, programs that we, board members really want to get in-depth information. Or feel like they're not up to date on, and I think we need to bring it up and say, hey, I really would like, you know, a presentation on this. And so we can get it on the calendar and give plenty of lead time to the people that would be presenting. So I think just if board members feel comfortable, you know, emailing Dr. Thompson or saying, hey, I really, you know, we, we haven't talked about this in two years. I'm wondering what happened to this program or what's the status of, you know, or something we just don't know about to reach out. So that then we can look at getting study sessions on the calendar. And we kind of, the other thing President Carr was saying, in theory, we try to stick to meetings on Tuesday night. Because that's on most of our calendars where we have blocked, so that's why we want to keep study sessions on Tuesdays if we have them in the future.
I don't know if you said this, but what we did last year is had a study session scheduled. So board member, if you have a subject that you would like more details on, a presentation, whatever. We can put that on the calendar so that we'll know what study sessions there are for whatever. And again, as Mrs. Clapham said, because we were meeting every Tuesday night for a little over a year. That got taxed. So I think as she said, our strategy would be to maybe put one study session on a month. So that you can at least have one of your Tuesdays each month available. Any questions about that?
So we have a list at DDL of several topics that we plan on covering. We were planning to cover them during special presentations, like one at each board meeting coming up. If the board would rather that go to study sessions, we just need to know that. But the list we already have is behavior, including a one-page summary for board members. Junior kindergarten, science of reading, evidence-based grading, and virtual elementary school. So we have a list that we were planning to cover one at each board meeting.
I, I think what Jamie is saying, and I, I see your, your hand, Mrs. Urban. I, I think we're preferring to go to a study session with those. Because any one of those can be lengthy, I would think. And what we would do is we would have two per study session. Right, so it wouldn't just, because that would take us past the school year. So if we had two per study session. Then we could have a, have a couple of study sessions. And I think it's two, obviously, Dr. Thompson, you can determine whether they're short presentations or. I know behavior is, is going to be longer, so.
Yeah, I think some of them will be fairly long and some would be fairly short. But sometimes that is hard to gauge because it depends on how much discussion and how many questions there are.
I do think behavior should probably be a topic in and of itself, since there's just such a, and I think that'd be a great study session one.
I think we could get some more guidance on what you want that to look like, the behavior presentation at the strategic planning session. Because behavior is part of the student pillar. And so we'll get an idea of what your questions are to help guide what that presentation looks like.
I think every topic that you listed is a great, it's, there are all the things that I've been wanting to know about. And would be great in a study session format.
I would add an update on RCA, the middle school and high school programs, I feel like I just, I mean, that doesn't have to be a full study session, but I feel like I don't know what's happening. Well, I get asked most about the middle school and high school discovery programs, but I mean, I might not even know everything that's happening over there.
Okay, so Dr. Thompson, let's do this. At our next leadership meeting, let's put. Subjects to calendar and we can, we can do that. All right, last other, in preparing for negotiations, I handed you out a sheet. And if you can look at four B, the recommendation for this past year. These are the individuals. You see the negotiating teams and the board members that were on each team. Obviously. Oh, it's not?
So first of all, where it says last, so this is twenty twenty-five, so that last year is talking about twenty twenty-four. Because if you'll notice, there's multiple board members that are not board members anymore. So really disregard where it says last year altogether, because it's completely.
Yeah, that's why I said, the recommendation.
But then like I traded with Christine, so where it says she was on teachers, she wasn't.
Christine, where were, where were you? Where are, where?
So that would be, so twenty twenty-five, so this is talking about March of last year, so the most recent one. But no, when you go to recommendation, that one is actually, I think, what was actually in twenty twenty-five. Like this is how you, the trickle down, last year actually meant twenty twenty-four, recommendation actually meant twenty twenty-four. So in twenty twenty-five, I took your spot on teachers.
Okay, with that being said, is there anybody, any board member, obviously we'll have to replace Easter Berkeley. And so Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Rafferty, there's opportunity if you sold it the wire. To be on negotiations. And we have the ASBU. Jamie, are you gonna stay on teachers? Oh, Doc, Ms. Doc, you are unclassified, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. Okay, now I see, okay.
All right.
Teachers last year was Wednesday at four?
Well, that's the, like I said, disregard, it was Fridays at one, that's why I feel like for you, it could be very challenging.
It is, I mean, it's, I would just.
Yeah, the dates and time, that's why I just asked you to look at four B, just for the list of the teams is. Mr. Sassy will get to us with the days and times, which it may not be the same. All I'm trying to do is set the teams for each of the negotiating teams, the board members with the teams. So are we on the same page? My apologies to you.
And I will caveat, I completely hear what you're saying, but I do think.
The dates and.
The dates and times, like you may set these teams and then someone, they change it to Tuesdays at one apartment. Like I absolutely can't do that, so then you have to trade anyway. So totally understand assigning the teams, just notice, knowing that if the time is incompatible, then we'll have to swap.
Never mind, next thing.
Mr. Rafferty has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So my daughter is an educator, is there any position?
You just can't be on the teacher one, be on anything else. You and Katie can't be on the teacher one, but you can be on.
Okay, so we'll just have to remember that when.
Yeah, and it was the same, Michael couldn't be on teacher either, so the two spots he had would work.
All right, any other other? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say no.